Roll call for September tenth work session. Councilmember Ralph.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Present.
Councilmember Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Baker.
Present.
City manager, Mr. Donald. City attorney, Mr. Miss Walker. You have a call.
I'm here too.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Great.
The first presentation is by Jacobs, a mid-year review of public works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to introduce to our Jacobs team, Mr. Wright. Mr. Ray, Lamont. With that, I'd love them to make their presentation and then we'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time tonight. My name is Wayne Wright, for the record. I'm the regional manager for Jacobs City Operations here in Atlanta. And I work with the local teams in the different cities we serve here. And with us tonight is the divisional vice president, John Mantegna, sitting on the back row. And Mr. Valenzuela already introduced Ray Knight, who is the deputy transportation manager, and Mont Philpott, who is our field services manager. And also here is Rodney Edwards, who's our subways coordinator. This is a... We're missing Eric Guth, who is our transportation manager. And this is your local team, who are engaged in providing services. I know you've got a lot going on tonight, and you've already been here a long time, so I'll be brief with the update. We gave you a lengthy document that's in your agenda materials, and you can read it at your leisure. I just wanted to hit some highlights at the beginning and then skip to the end, so we can conclude and then we have some time for questions. Everybody good with that? And if the technology cooperates, we've got a surprise for you in the video.
I don't have the... The screen is not on, so I didn't...
We got no audio.
We got no audio.
Wait, did it go on the computer? I see something.
Yes.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay. Are you able to do it from there?
I can, if you folks can follow along. The special surprise we prepared was a little video that basically shows our services and introduces some of our team. And we thought it would be more interesting than hearing somebody turn on. And we can distribute the link if the technology's not... You know, I know this is a random space, it doesn't belong to these cities. I know sometimes the technology just lives workhorse.
That is a surprise?
Can y'all see?
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, good. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That was a surprise.
The guys came out, before came out, and was very, you know, attentive, I mean. And that pretty much see why I mentioned this.
There's been a problem with the jointing blocks. And I can proudly say that now, Lamont has been taking care of having opportunities to help all of the county employees. That was a very smooth transition.
You know, the transition, I think, will be the difference in the county get what you need to complete the state. You know, you got more people to the asset, to add people, to the deal, you know, people come here from different locations to help you out. I was one of the employees that transitioned from Fulton County and came over to Jacobs. And I'd like to extend a shout out to Jacobs off the work, off base, on our work performance, our standing, our state.
I am a University of Georgia graduate. My degree was in graphics engineering. Essentially, I'm in turn here at the South Fulton Public Works facility. And what we do is be as an internal supervisor, supervisor.
The project is going to be a valuable, I'm hoping they can operate about as small as possible. Instead of the act of a different project, we're looking forward to maintaining the western city's own full, all the drive. And provide the best possible we hope to offer to the city. And to make sure that it will improve that the city of South Fulton is replaced.
Good.
Thank you. What's that?
I'll be sharing.
So that's it. I will talk for a minute, but my favorite scene in that video is Mr. Philpott doing the jazz. It's kind of classic. I thought you want to see the stars here.
I like Mr. Mahoney and his mouse coat.
It was real, how about that? So... If we could put up the presentation on the screen, I think that'd be a help for folks to follow along. I'll run through these slides real quickly and we'll move on. You know, Jacobs entered into a partnership with the city of South Fulton last fall to do public work services. As an extension of city staff, we are your staff in the field services area of public works. And if you could go to the second page. Oh, is there?
There you go.
Perfect. The city had a deadline, a short deadline to meet, to pick up the services from the county. You had a desire to provide a soft landing for the county's employees. And we did that as well. And then we began the really massive task of acquiring all the vehicles and the equipment that were needed to do the work, getting contracts in place for the materials, subcontractors, and that sort of thing, so that we could cover the entire scope of the work that was required. In January, we started up the call center, answering phones for all of the city's offices. When the warm weather began, we started with a four-month, a four-week, monthly summer maintenance schedule that includes, to this day, letter pickup and mowing the shoulders of the roads, and other aspects of maintaining the roads and the rights-of-way, which is the property the city owns on either side of the pavements. As you know, Jacobs has started up services for a number of cities and their public works departments. And so we've got a pretty good baseline understanding of public works and what's required. But every city is unique, and certainly South Fulton is no exception. So because there were so many unknowns going into the partnership, we agreed with the city staff that we would revisit what we're doing mid-year and make sure that moving forward, we're doing everything that's required and that we're, you know, financially in reasonable shape. So we've modified our expectations and our services in concert with your staff to make sure we meet your needs. I do want to remind you that Fulton County had proposed to continue the same services that they have been providing for, in recent years, for about eight and a half million. While Jacobs has provided the citizens an enhanced level of service for a amount of fifty of the city's budget, and we're very happy of that. So this slide shows some of the differences between what we originally expected and what we found after getting on the ground. We had gotten with Victor from County Public Works staff and a number of the other folks, and they had identified areas of the county maintained, and so we started with that understanding. And so, as you can see, we started with 160 miles of city collecting roads. And this excludes state routes that are in the city, except for Cascade and Palmetto Road, which the county maintained. So we've been... That's part of the 160 miles that we've been taking care of. And soon after we started, we... The road lanes, at the city's request, increased to about 204 miles that we're maintaining now on a four-week rotation. And speaking of our team maintenance, our expectation at the beginning was that we would maintain, do the four-week rotation during the growing season, April to September roughly. And at the city's request, we've extended that year-round to include maintenance of the streets year-round because of the litter and other debris and all the vegetation that the city has that needs to be cleaned from the right ways. So we've added that. And just these two changes meant we had to add an extra crew and some extra equipment that we hadn't anticipated in order to meet the needs of the city. And you can see the numbers. The traffic studies are more than we expected, the street lights, right-of-way permits, that's folks wanting permission to dig and do work in the rights-of-ways that are owned by the city. So where do we stand today? If you could move to the next one. So we're... The good is we're moving at a proactive mode. I think the last presentation we did before you, Mr. Guth talked about crawling, before we could walk and then run, and running is where we are, is trying to take care of things in a proactive manner. Over time, with regular scheduled maintenance, we will reduce the number of complaints from citizens and greatly enhance the appearance of the city and extend the life of the infrastructure. On the needs improvement side, you know there's been a lot of maintenance needs that have been somewhat neglected over the years. Traffic signals, stormwater, road pavement bridges, dirt roads. I know you know this, it's going to take regular investment to bring them up to speed and get them to the condition that you want. And I know that's part of the discussion. You guys have some tough decisions to make. So the rest of the slides here, down to the bottom, are really an activity review that we've divided for your information. And I'm not going to talk about these, but if we could skip down to page 26, we can wrap this up. We just... We tried to give some highlights for each of the broad areas that we've covered and worked in. As I said a minute ago, I know you're considering additional investments to improve the city's infrastructure, and I'm excited to see that, and I encourage that. In my experience, really solid public services are vital for communities to be on a developed basis. It's tough to sell a community to people who want investment at a given rate if they don't feel safe, if the roads aren't maintained, if there's litter. So we're doing the right things and bringing your public services, making sure you provide sound, solid public services and get your infrastructure strong and taken care of, functional. The city's always got an opportunity to strengthen that, to beautify the city, improve the traffic flow, and make its roads and sidewalks networks stronger and better. So with that, we're very grateful for your time, and we'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you very... Thank you very much. Mr. Jackson?
First page. You were talking about detention ponds. Turn off the page. You said there were 32, but you are maintaining... It's only seven. I don't understand. It says detention ponds maintenance cost $52,000 for 32 ponds. In parentheses, there are only seven ponds.
We had been of the understanding that the county had a contract for maintaining the detention ponds. Thank you. We had understood the county had a contract to maintain detention ponds, and we're told it was $52,000. After we started work and investigated further, we discovered there were 32 ponds, I think.
And you're saying only seven, in parentheses?
Right. The $50,000 was just... Was the contract just to cut...
You say it's on 32?
Yes. So at this point, we have maintained no detention ponds, because the city has not made the decision to take over the stormwater detention from the county.
So right now, you're saying detention ponds cost $200,000 for 32, currently owned and maintained, that's what you're saying?
A contract... A contractor to do that would cost that, yes.
With regards to the 33 detention ponds, it's 33 that we have. The $50,000 change was to work, to clear some trees out of seven detention ponds, because it has grown increasingly. That's why it was... That was the last work done for detention ponds. So the 33, now that we haven't done any activity, probably we're under a rate of $200,000 to maintain again, because it hasn't been done almost a year.
So... Want you all maintaining some detention ponds?
Remember, that's one of the challenges that we have with Fulton County, that we are currently looking at potentially to litigate.
Or add it into the FY '20 budget. And so currently, we've added them in the FY '20 budget. But in the past, it was our expectation and our legal position that the county should continue to maintain those. They have refused. And so we've added them to the FY '20 budget unless we decide to litigate against the county.
Okay, so...
It's good.
I have a list that I probably...
My performance is...
...because I have gone through the entire document. So why are we maintaining Cascade, Campbell, Iowa, since it was owned by the state? And I know that the county was doing it for a long time. But in the reverse, the state isn't maintaining any of our highways or streets. So why are we doing that?
There is an agreement that Fulton County and Georgia UOT signed years ago, which actually swapped maintenance between South Fulton Parkway and Cascade Palmetto. Not entire Cascade Palmetto, it is from Campbellton Road to Campbellton Ferry Road. It's about 4.2 miles that we maintain, in local maintaining, South Fulton Parkway.
Because South Fulton Parkway is no longer in the city, so is that still relevant then, in terms of the swap?
Travel is something that now that we're a new city, that's something that we'll have to revisit with state. There are many things that has to be changed, done, bring up to date.
Do you want me to talk to that for a moment? For all of those things that you said relates to added work, and there's one of these pages that has that. I would like a breakdown of what those expenses would be for the added work. And it's on one of these pages, I didn't write down the breakdown, so I'm just going to make that point. Transportation planning is lacking. So I would like to know what is your advice as it relates to transportation planning? What you have assessed thus far, and where you think we need to go with the plan?
The city needs its own comprehensive transportation plan. What I understand is it works now.
Yes, with regards to transportation planning, the services in South Fulton have contracted with the vendor that works actually for the plan, the regional commission. And that's in the works, is a plan that will be completed by December next year.
Public works building. How much rent will we pay to...
We're not paying anything.
And do you have a full assessment of the condition of our infrastructure?
No, ma'am.
So the call center volume has increased, and I guess that's because we might be calling in for service. So how are you handling that increase? Is the turnaround time excellent? Or do they have to wait for an extraordinary amount of time? And what's the average turnaround time to get back?
I can't call the numbers off the top of my head. I know the first month that we didn't meet our call hold times and our length of call times, but it's since January, we've been meeting those targets pretty well.
So I would really like to ask some information on that. And then, stormwater structure maintenance. Tell me about the condition of our, generally, of our stormwater structures.
There... We've responded to, I think, 150 issues. There are quite a few problems with stormwater maintenance.
So when you say problems, just give me one or two specifics. Cloud broken down, need repaired, need redone.
Yeah, with regards to stormwater, there are two things that we're looking into. The first one is the MS4, that's going to help us out to ensure that the stormwater is managed at a better level. And the majority of the work that we forecasted and have seen it is on dirt roads. We have structures that are old, that are coast pipes, coast, also driveways and dirt roads. It is problematic, and as you know, when it's a dirt road, it's a constant maintenance issue. But most of the dirt roads also didn't want to go into a paved road, they wanted to stay as a dirt road. And with regards to typical maintenance, that's what they're doing, because sometimes there's a failure on the infrastructure below those inlets, and it's something typical that we have to go year by year, case by case.
I think Mr. Philpott maybe can answer your question in a sort of detail.
Some of the stormwater structure problems that I may be talking about are the ones that have been broken when heavy trucks run over them and everything. And the majority of them are clean. We do clean all the structures with the MS4 program. But mainly, it's the broken tops from what... In the areas where trucks run over. And we are casting some of them, and some of them we have poured in place, and that's how we fix it.
Thank you. So that's all I have right now, because that's all we have, what I've got.
Mr. Valenzuela. Mr. Valenzuela, where is the project, the growth improvement, and button there and Camp Creek, the bridge and signalization?
We just completed and received the signing contracts from Fulton County. So those are the next steps to reissue orders with consultants to go back to work on the majority of T plus projects. So we'll be seeking a project manager for T plus projects, and we'll go back to work.
And Councilor Dunn, that project is going, once they begin, you're talking about a year for the bridge. And I... My suggestion was that they not take the whole bridge out, but they have... They work on it, so we still can get trapped, we have a lot of business to go there, so they can still get trapped through. But that is a very important corner. So you have signalization from... They're still on, right?
Yes, sir.
And the bridge? And we're doing the bridge, so we're talking about a decent year project.
But do we know when it will commence, at least, estimate? So you're looking at October, November, after you've executed these signed agreements?
What's missing for that project is to finalize the acquisition of the rightsway. At this point, we're also contracting with a firm that will help us out to finalize the rightsway of those projects. The design of the project is at a 95%. We left a little bit cushion of room to complete the rightsway and go to construction. As soon as we finalize the rights acquisition, I would assume that early spring is when we'll be ready to construct.
Early spring of 2020.
That's correct.
Do you need a right-of-way for that bridge? A right-of-way acquisition for that bridge where it sits now?
Because we have an intersection improvement planned, the bridge being wired, and the approaches to the bridge, and the intersection, at the stream, about the road. Yes, we do... It's not extensive, but we need right-of-way.
Okay. All right. Ms. Rawl?
I have a couple of questions. If you could provide any update that you can relative to Cascade Road and dealing with the culvert and the bridge issue there, that has rose closed. And second, I appreciate the appreciation, because it really spoke to the volume of requests you've received over the last year. I mean, in some areas in particular, they were interesting. And I guess I may be probably one of the districts most impacted about the detention ponds. I was aware that they were 34, and I've gotten calls from HOAs all over my area. I guess because it's the older part of the city. Before, you know, subdivisions in those areas came to be, you just have them all up, and they're very overgrown. And so I have... We figured that... I'm glad it's in the 2020 budget, but I also think it speaks to a question that Gilliard had relative to additional maintenance on state roads. Because one of the reasons that we see, like Camp Creek, for example, that looks better than other states' roads is because you have it, Arotropolis also coming cleaning in addition to the state, and so it has an extra tension. But one part of Camp Creek where it stops, is you can tell, like, right when I get to Ena, I already know it stops. Same thing with going down Fulton Industrial. So if we want that enhanced level of aesthetics, more routine cutting, we have to allocate. It's been an ongoing challenge, that's why I'm challenged with Campbellton Road all the time. You know, it grows back, you know, within four weeks, it looks like a jungle. And so I think that's also something we have to think about when we think about sidewalks and where we put them, because the maintenance on them and not leaving out that grass space, like, taking it all the way to the street. We just have to do that, because the maintenance is a lot. So thank you for your presentation, and I do hope when we go through the budget conversations, we keep money in to deal with the culverts across the city, and as well as some enhancements on those state roads, because they influence the aesthetics of the city in a significant way.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Ben, pleasure.
The next item is a presentation by Arotropolis CID for signal preemption. And I ask that Council remember to use your microphones when you're speaking, so that we can hear you on the recorder.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kirsten Moat, I'm the program director for the Arotropolis Atlantic Community of... I'm the program director for the Aerotropolis Atlanta Community Enforcement District. It's an honor to be here. And tonight, I want to talk about signal preemption and connected vehicles. So signal preemption is primarily for emergency responders, where it turns all phases of a traffic signal to red except for the direction in which that emergency vehicle is approaching. And so we have had, we've had a number of conversations with first responders in all of the Southern Fulton cities and have presented to fire chiefs a number of times. And while everyone is on board, it's always a question about how do we fund this type of program? And where, what kind of programs are out there that can help supplement some of the funding for this? And so we've been working for the past 12 months trying to find different programs that might be utilized to supplement some of that funding to provide that signal preemption across all of Southern Fulton County. And it is a desire to outfit every single traffic signal in Southern Fulton County because all of the cities have a mutual aid agreement where you may be responding to other cities within the county. And so if they're all working on the same system, you can get the benefits for all of the cities. So what are some of the benefits? First, these types of signals have improvements provide a 70% reduction in emergency vehicle collision. They also decrease the number of collisions by other vehicles that may not be seeing the emergency vehicles and therefore run into the backs of the vehicles in front of them. It also reduces the time in which the emergency vehicles can make it to an incident. And finally, this type of program is provided by a third party vendor who provides all the communication, all of the maintenance, all of the monitoring, and provides any data that the city desires. So, over the past year, as I mentioned, we've been working on trying to find a program that can help supplement some of the funding for signal preemption. And so recently, Gerald McDowell, my executive director, was invited to an initial discussion within the region, and that took place in June of this year. It was led by Kerry Armstrong, who's the charity of Atlanta Regional Commission. And what they want to do is bring signal technology to Metro Atlanta to attract vehicle manufacturers who are looking at connected vehicle technology and invite them to come to Metro Atlanta, test some of their connected vehicle technologies within Metro Atlanta, and potentially bring some of their manufacturing. And because of these previous conversations that we've had with the cities, with our fire departments, the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Georgian Department of Industry and Transportation wanted to work out a partnership with the CID's and those cities that we've been having conversations with in Southern Fulton. And so they have asked us to identify 75 intersections within Southern Fulton along major corridors to connect the region to Atlanta and then further north. As you can see in the map, these are all of the cities or areas that A R C is in discussion with regarding this type of technology. Over the past couple of months, Mr. McDowell has met with mayors of all four cities, College Park, East Point, South Fulton, and Hayville. And now we're here before you tonight to consider this program as a part of your traffic infrastructure. So the program will look like this. The Atlanta Regional Commission has asked the locals to provide a local match. This is similar to any type of grant program through the Atlanta Regional Commission. 80% provided by A R C slash GDOT, 20% provided by the locals. So if these 75 intersections are the 20% match, the agreement is that A R C slash GDOT will come in and outfit additional signals within Southern Fulton. That would equate to 80%. And ultimately, we want all of the signals to be outfitted with this technology. So this is the first phase in doing that. In addition to that, the A R C, in addition to the preemption, A R C wants to add the technology on top of it for this connected vehicle program, which is slightly different than just the preemptions. That will probably be installed at a later date when the vehicle manufacturers are closer to having the technology within the vehicles. Probably around 2021, 2022. So within the city of South Fulton, we identified a few intersections. Here on this map, what you see is US 29. We have three markers at Buffington Road, which is that middle marker, and then at Buffington Road at South Fulton Parkway. So those four intersections. And then along Camp Creek Parkway from Bevron Road, traveling north and west up to Fulton Industrial Boulevard. Again, this is phase one, and we do want to outfit every single traffic signal within the city of South Fulton. So based on the 75 signals that the CID submitted to the A R C as a part of this program, 10 of those intersections are in the city of South Fulton. And we, we at the CID have found that we can help contribute to this program and help offset that local match at 20%. So South Fulton has 10 intersections with a total cost of $42,500. The CID's will contribute 20% of that, leaving a funding commitment by the city of South Fulton at $34,000. Again, I want to reiterate, this is to get the program started. This is a local match portion. A R C would then provide the funding for additional signals. And the lieutenant governor has announced that they're going to be doing a press conference about this regional program in the near future. And we wanted to make sure that South Metro being included as a part of that press conference. And so we want, we want at the CID to ensure that the cities are comfortable with moving forward with this project. And hopefully, some of our funding commitment can help with that decision. So I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, thank you very, thank you very much, Ms. Robb.
Yes, do we, is there any, do we know what the, sorry. Do you know what the, what it's going to look like? Is there anything in here that shows what it'll look like?
So I don't have anything in this presentation that shows you, but the city of Marietta has outfitted all of their signals with this technology. They have invited anybody who is interested to go see a demonstration of how it works, to go up there. And so I, I would invite you all, if you are interested, that we could set up a date to go up to Marietta for a couple hours and demonstrate how this works. There are also a few videos from the city of Atlanta, maybe from the city of Marietta. That I'll be happy to provide links to you all.
And you said that you have to have them in 10 locations? And you mentioned there were four location. Okay, I'm sorry. Mid Hill or Old?
So on the first map, there are four locations. So the three that are towards the top, that's US 29. So on the right-hand side, that's US 29 at Washington Road. The middle one is US 29 at Buffington Road. And the one on the left is US 29 at Ben Hill.
Okay. And these signals, I'm probably, I'm just confused. Because I saw from the signal, okay, so are they going to attach to the signals that's already there? And this is going to enhance public safety?
Yes, so there is nothing that you will see on the signals. This goes into the traffic control cabinet, and it's a module that gets plugged into the cabinet. There will then be modules inside the fire vehicle. So as a fire vehicle is approaching, it sends a signal that the traffic, it sends a communication signal that the traffic signal then picks up, and that's what preempts it to change all phases to red except for the one that it's approaching. It also does it with enough time to clear out any traffic that may be in front of that fire or ambulance vehicle before they get to the intersection. So they do not have to slow down, they do not have to stop, and they do not have to worry about other directions maybe not seeing them because they'll be at a red light.
Okay, I just, I just have, I would love to see how it's going to work. Because I have a concern, because I know like Washington Road and Roosevelt Highway, and then Mid Hill and Highway 29, which is Roosevelt Highway. That congestion around a certain time of the day, around 5:00, it gets crazy. Even at Roosevelt and Buffington Road. And so for the signals to change, to accommodate public safety, I guess my question is where the cars going to go? Because.
Yes, so it'll, it'll talk to series of traffic signals. So it doesn't necessarily have to talk to one traffic signal at a time. It talks to them within a certain proximity. Yeah, so a certain radius. So it will turn, let's say they're turning left from Ben Hill onto US 29 headed towards Washington Road. As soon as it makes that left-hand turn, it knows to turn the other two signals green. So it'll allow all of that traffic to flush out. Even at Washington Road, if there are people making a left-hand turn, since there's no left-hand turn lane, because the other direction on US 29 will be red, people will be free to make left-hand turns without having a guarded green left turn.
Okay, I got, I got two things. The other may have indicated.
They have indicated that they have the funding available. The one thing I will say is that we do not anticipate spending any money until we have an MOU with A R C for this 80/20 agreement, just like we would for a green. So the other cities have committed verbally. We have not gotten a written commitment from them, but we anticipate they will hear us.
And you need the MOU from A R C first?
We don't want to spend any of the committed funds until we have an MOU. So, and for instance, I would not recommend that we put any money into these signals until we have an agreement that A R C, with A R C, that if we put in these signals, you're going to put them in this column of signals.
Chief, Robb, if you can. I don't know if you have any experience with these things, gentlemen. But if you have, give a little bit about how you feel about it.
Yeah, I have a little experience with it. I think it's a great system, and it's beneficial. But I think we have to consider that, determine what vehicles are going. I know she mentioned putting on BMS units. And I'm not afraid of putting a BMS unit in the air for police cars. And the reason behind that is when you have multiple units responding to an incident, after a 20-second delay, it goes back to the road. So if you have one that's 30 seconds behind, it'll change. And so if you have too many vehicles going, it's going to lose the system. So I think it's a great system, and I think it's worth looking to. But I would recommend if we're putting on the fire trucks, because that way when we're responding to those emergency incidents, it is aligned with. But when you have too many vehicles, or some too many vehicles, I think it can congest the traffic more.
That's good to know, I didn't think about it that way.
But what happens to answer Councilman Robb's question, it opens up the full traffic. So if we're going down Roosevelt Highway and there are four signals that have it, it's going to have all four of those signals green. So all the cars don't have to worry about moving because they're able to continue to go. And then the fire trucks, whatever it uses on, can continue the full traffic as well. So it's not going to make traffic congested, and it's not going to create chaos because it's just opening up those intersections so those cars can continue moving. And that's usually what causes the problems and accidents, is when you approach an intersection and the cars can't move anywhere, the emergency vehicles can't move anywhere, and now everyone's panicking and not knowing which direction to go.
Got you, very much. How about Ms. Newey?
I just wanted to know, how would these specific sites determine?
Now, I'm not sure about those specific sites, but traditionally, the fire service will work with the vendors, and we will identify those 10 intersections that we determined that needs to be active. And that's kind of how we do it. I know in Marietta, they have the whole city, so it's easy to do it because every intersection has that light to it. Once we get to that point where you have everybody, it will work more appropriately. But until then, it's best to consider which intersection is the most important ones that we want to put it at. So those are the ones that we will start with.
Okay. All right, Ms. Dunn?
So thank you for your presentation. I have, so looking at South Fulton, you said the initial phase. And reading through the program, it says that there are going to be 1,700 intersections. In South Fulton, not just the city, I know the city has 10, but just overall, in South Fulton, there's about 60 total intersections. How do we assure that we're going to be priority during this initial phase? Because 1,700, where are those other intersections that are there?
Yes, so the 1,700 intersections, so first it started with 1,000 intersections. And now it's grown to 1,700 because everybody across the region is interested in participating in this. A R C approached us first and said it is, this program will not work unless we connect the airport area. I think having that MOU with A R C is that guarantee that this area is the priority area. I can tell you from conversations that I have, we are the furthest along in these conversations with the exception of City Marietta because they already have the technology on their signals. We, they asked us for 75, up to 75 locations that connects the airport to Atlanta and north. But we went beyond that, wanted to look at major corridors that headed out of the Aerotroplas along state routes, State Route 6, Camp Creek Parkway, US 29, Riverdale Road, and really connecting all around the airport. I believe that once we have an MOU with A R C, it's going to be vital for the cities to work with A R C to determine where the other locations should be that make the most sense with regards of how the fire vehicles travel throughout the city.
So I guess right now, you're saying that they're going to be those 600 intersections around South Fulton County, period, will probably be priority because of the airport. So, and these other, I guess these 1,700 or 1,600 other locations, intersections are all throughout county? Would that throughout that area?
City of Atlanta and North Fulton, given into Southern Forsyth. And what's not on here is just the Southern Fulton County. We're also in conversations with Clayton County about outfitting some of their signals as well.
Okay.
Further questions? Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Dunn?
The next item on the agenda is the discussion on citywide fee schedule.
Ms. Van, who do you think that's going to be?
So the purpose of this is, the council actually directed at the last meeting that staff kind of consolidate all of our current fees and what the proposed fee schedule for the city of South Fulton should be. Because we didn't have a full and comprehensive dedicated list. So earlier in the week, we provided this fee schedule to you for your review prior to today to start a robust conversation on whether this was appropriate, if there were additional changes. And so you can consider this a consolidation of all the fees available. But I believe it will also help our budget discussion because in the past, what we've done is looked at our past revenues and expenditures, but not so much taking into account the growth based on our fee schedules. And so I'll defer to the assistant city manager, but just highlight that that's kind of the purpose, is to not only evaluate the fee schedule that we have now, but also leverage it as a tool because in every area, we're kind of growing. because in every area, we're kinda growing and exceeding, so our revenue should be doing that as well.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Delegate Winfield. Um, as the City Manager stated, we wanted to house all of our fees in one consolidated document, not only to assist us in our budget numbers, but also for customer services. When a customer pulls this document down online, or through other media, they'll be able to see what fees the city charged for the various services, as well as products that they can achieve. So throughout the document, you will see that a lot of the fees are based on historical data, that the team has already been charging, but there are some additions for uh, the team being innovative and making way for new uh, fees that we anticipate coming down the pipe in the short, or in short term, such as family movement permits. While we have not been doing that historically, we are positioning ourselves to be able to do that in the near future. So you will see some new expenses and new fees throughout the document as well.
Any questions?
Ms. Jackson, please, her hand, just give your ideas, uh, and Ms. Willis.
Please. Oh, enjoy. My question might not be where you are. Um, we had talked about, well, I had, as far as different permits and being under destination South Fulton, because that's economic development. Um, where are we with that?
Well, the council would have to make a motion to move it.
Give a microphone, this is, I'll give the microphone.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, so if the council, any change like that, I think the council is looking at four or five changes of where people potentially are or would be. Once you as a body decide to make those moves, you would simply make the vote, and I would assume that your plan is to make it during the approval of the budget. So you would simply uh, identify those areas, vote on it, it's done.
Okay, you said during the approval.
Well, that's, I mean, I think that's probably the cleanest way to do it, you could do it before, but I'm sure you don't want it.
I see a lot of things have been moved.
Like?
Uh...
Well, remember, the proposed budget, they haven't been moved. If they're in the proposed budget, that is just the administration delivering to you the proposed budget and structure for F Y twenty. If there's something that you do not agree with, if you wanna move somewhere else, et cetera, et cetera, again, when you pass the budget, or when you give those instructions, uh, my thought is, similar to last year, you do it kind of at one time, and then when you pass the budget beginning October one, those things would be aligned that way.
Okay, thank you.
This man.
This is a major overhaul, and what I would have liked to have seen would have been comparison with what we're doing now, with what we are proposing, you know, side by side, that would have been.
Well, but that's, that's only what we're doing now, right? That's not a proposal.
It's still, it's still a proposal, I would still like to see what we have, right, in existence right now.
In terms of fees?
In terms of fees, and the only thing that, um, that I was able to go online and get, I didn't bring it with me, was the, was the current one that was done in twenty seventeen, I believe. So I would like to have seen where we are, and then where we're going. And now that, and then, um, some indication of why we are adding new ones, dropping ones, you know, some off. All I see is numbers on the page.
So for the most part, we are not proposing changes to the original fee schedule. Like I said, most of that was based on historical data, however, there are some uh, changes that are noted in red, where we're proposing modifications. So we did note the, suggesting modifications in red, and I hope that it came across in the document that you have, but that was our intention, and if not, we can correct that, um...
It did, it did, it did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it did. So that would just, you know, that really wasn't the, the good, because it makes you, you kind of sort of, I think we know where you're going. And that's not in there, so.
So we'll make sure that you get the colored version, because that was the intent, was to show you where we are currently, and then the red was to highlight where we're proposing those modifications to be.
And those areas are mainly in the area of residential building permits. Uh, and so I think it has been well documented, I know uh, he stepped away for a moment, but Councilmember Colleen, along with many of you, have highlighted that our building permits are dramatically lower than anyone else. So we didn't add subsequent details into the memo, because I think that's something that the community, everyone has consensus on, and so the adjustments and increases of fees, um, are strictly in those areas, and they are still substantially lower than other areas to keep us competitive.
So I would like to see that.
Uh, Councilwoman Rowan.
One of the things, um, I recall last year, we had one of the business owners come speak to the council regarding the occupational tax on massage therapists. Um, it is currently categorized, um, enabled by a comparison of ours versus municipalities around us. And ours was significantly higher, because it's kind of locked, locked in with, you know, medical providers, engineers. I really want us to look at that, because you know, as we try to create a friendly business climate, I think we have to look at all of that, and I know she had provided and left all of us with some information about cities around us, and they were around, I remember around the two fifty compared to four hundred mark.
I, I've heard that too, and seen people come in for business licenses, and say that we're not coming back to the community.
Yes, that particular, and like I said, if, I know why I said it there, well, I don't know why I said it there, but when you look at all the other professions, you're talking about doctors and, you know, engineers, that's just to me, uh, we, we need to look at pulling that out, and figuring out what category that goes under in business license records.
We'll take a look at that one as well.
Ms. Willis.
And so I just wanna, I wanna point out to my colleagues, um, as I look at this fee schedule, um, what I think is confusing, Ms. Winfield, is that when you all updated what we are currently and where we are now, you all put it in the same box, and you highlight it, uh, so it is there, but it's, it's no description of current and recommended.
Exactly.
So what I would suggest is that you call it, uh, current and recommended, um, and you can do it in the same structure. I also wanna, um, say that we need to, as my colleagues, we need to caution ourselves to not make business, make doing business more complicated in the City of South Fulton. We did do a business showcase, and we had over a hundred businesses to show up, and they were very complimentary, uh, of, you know, the, the... They were very complimentary of the business showcase, and they were very complimentary of doing business with South Fulton. And then they gave us some constructive feedback, and when we made decisions to move departments, we need to not make decisions based off of what we think we know, but we need to do research. And uh, I did do some research, and business license, uh, in most cities are tied to the community, department, and regulatory affairs, it's not tied to finance. Three cities I did talk to, um, said that when they did try to put business licensing in finance, it complicated things, and it made it more challenging for businesses to come in and get their licensing. So I do agree, it does not need to go under economic development, and I do plan to, uh, release all this research to the public. Uh, but they did say it should go where other permits, business, uh, where other permits are obtained, and most of them have them in community, department, and regulatory affairs.
Mr. Colleen.
Thank you, um, I, I do like, thank you so, so much for these increased building permit fees, I did see these, I didn't know. Um, impact fees, I don't see those listed, is that gonna be a separate presentation?
It will be separate, because you have, you should have on the agenda tonight, to the impact fee, uh, committee or structure.
Right, I saw it.
And so they will guide those efforts, and so we will adopt, adjust that at that time.
Okay, so, but it will be, it'll all be on the one?
We will make sure we continue to update that document.
So actually, your committee will establish, will establish the fees, so that'll be a process. You're establishing the committee, they're gonna do a lot of research, looking what Fulton County's done, and they'll bring back to you proposed fees.
Our, what, what committees then?
The Impact Fee Committee.
It's on your, it's on the agenda for the committee.
So this is actually a committee that, um, I believe...
Another committee, I got it.
However, those fees will become a part of this.
Right, right, okay, um, I'm just bringing out a people to a point though. The, on page... Fifty-four, the, um, and maybe we could have our Parks Director, Mr. Phillips, come down. But the, the, there is no charge for our park stage to other municipal and government entities?
So we heard Council voiced some concerns about that, and so that's why this highlighted, because we would like to seek some guidance from this body as to whether we wanna continue with the historical trend, or we want to change that.
I mean, if, I will say if other people are loaning us free things, then I'd give, let's, let's continue to do that. But I, I, I don't know that, I didn't know that we had access to any free facilities from other cities. So if we don't, then I think that we should be charging them on the stages. And then, and then also, and I'll ask you when we come up, um, when we say it's no charge, is that, that's no charge for the stage, is that also meaning it's no charge for the delivery of the stage and the setup of the stage by staff and personnel?
That is correct, for each initial or for one use per calendar year. So it's not open-ended, um, and again, that's a historical element that we want guidance from the council in terms of, uh, how to be forward with that. Uh, a lot of our neighboring cities have used that one free use on a fairly regular basis, and so, uh, we need a guidance from council to determine how best to address that element of the fee schedule.
Yeah, uh, I'm gonna yield to Councilor Baker, I didn't mean to pass.
I just wanted to know, uh, was that a policy under Fulton County?
Yes.
So therefore, it was probably a policy on Fulton County, because they, you know, kinda were over the cities.
Mr.... Can I speak to that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct.
Yeah.
Uh, it was just something we did, because we were all incorporated.
It was one park.
So we just be good use for one time, yeah.
So, so yeah, so you, I'm sure you will receive guidance, I'm sure you will receive guidance from council, I give back to you.
Yeah, yeah, there's no advocacy here, we simply want a council to kind of give us guidance, and we would follow that guidance and communicate with our labor institutions accordingly. So yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that you, that you bring us back some recommendations, to eliminate that free.
It would, it would default to the standard fees.
To the standard fee, so yes, let's, let's, I'll make a motion that we default to the standard fee.
Second.
Can we do that in a work session? Can we do that in a work session, Madam Attorney?
You did. I'm not aware of any legislation that's limiting you from taking action in work sessions.
If I say a second.
I'll be moving a second in a discussion, although the data, that passed.
All right, um, one more thing, so this is on our consent, this, oh no, this is just in general. This is on our consent agenda for tonight. So, am, am I correct? I am correct in that?
Yes.
So if we pass it, will these new fees become effective immediately, or will they become effective October one?
October one.
Okay, and what I see missing from here, and I know that, uh, well, I know that I've been talking to several departments about this for, around special events, but I don't see fees for, uh, police and fire. I understand that we're charging fifty dollars an hour per officer for non-city events.
Those are officers that are off duty capacity, they're not serving as City of South Fulton personnel for those, uh, non-city events.
Um, all right, I just, I do think, I, I'm hearing that it can't be regulated, but I, I do think for people who are planning events, because there are events coming up in October, uh, we haven't defined what a city event is, and so if I'm planning to hold an event, I, I think that we should come up with some way to publish what the likely fees would be per one hundred people, per five hundred people. You know, if I'm, if I'm planning an event in the parks, if I'm planning a parade or a march, um, having some published list of what those fees will be for the city to provide services, or for officers, or whatever, to provide those services. If it's, if there's just some clear, transparent, consistent fee schedule, I think that's...
I don't know that we can do, it's yet, we can definitely provide clearer guidance in terms of how, um, the organization can address those public safety concerns, because they are responsible for contracting for those security and public safety services. So we don't mandate that they utilize City of South Fulton officers in their off-duty capacity, but when they do, they're contracted for their labor.
And then, and then, um, lastly to that, well... Um, okay, thanks. Okay, uh, let's go.
He keeps singing my name, because he keep missing me, I don't know if it's a problem. So, um, in the fee schedule, all of the ones that are highlighted as yellow are new fees.
Yes.
So, um, with the filming, so we're now accepting filming fees, we, have we been collecting filming fees?
No, that will be, we're, we're, uh, firm present a ordinance to guide, they're going for, but those fees will align with, when we make recommendations in terms of the ordinance and the legislation that will govern those activities.
Okay, okay, I just wanted clarity on that. And then also too, um, the Airbnb, is that not in here, because I kinda scanned through it, I mean, is that a different fee? I mean, is that supposed to be in here? What?
It should be in there, um, we'll miss that one. So it's treated like a business license.
So it's treated like a business license, so it's not pulled out and specified that it's for Airbnb. Okay, all right, that was my only question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President, at some point, I might maybe go into a breaking meeting, because I have ten minutes. I second that.
We've got one more item.
One more item.
Community Development and Regulatory Affairs Activities.
Greetings, Mayor and Council. We are super excited to have the opportunity to have a discussion with you all, to speak more about the Post Industrial Boulevard initiative. Um, I'm sure you're aware, um, that we've made some efforts last year to bring about some of those projects that are still missing, so this discussion tonight is just gonna give you an opportunity to understand what our efforts are as far as that. Um, you received some information just recently, um, telling you more in depth as to what we're working on. So I'm gonna give an opportunity, um, for you to speak with Mr. Jeff Strickland and Mr. Ken Girard, uh, excuse, Girard, of Girard and Davis. Uh, if you would, please refrain from asking any project-specific questions. Um, that memo that you did receive, um, just now, will give you instructions as to how to ask those project-specific questions. Okay, right, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it is a pleasure to be here in front of you this evening, thank you for taking the time. I know that you all have another agenda in front of you, so I will be brief. My name is Ken Girard, I'm here with my colleague Jeff Strickland, and we are honored to be in front of you. Uh, I am an attorney, uh, up in North Fulton, I am a city attorney, I represent the City of Milton, uh, that is also in Fulton County, I also represent a variety of county governments as well. My law firm, uh, is a governmental boutique law firm, and we have been at least approached with an option of helping you in some of your initiatives, and we are prepared to do that. And what we really wanted to do today, was out, without getting into any project-specific details, was just come and introduce ourselves, and say, welcome. I have been practicing, uh, since nineteen ninety-five, uh, all I do is governmental law, that is, uh, the stem and stern of my practice. Mr. Strickland, who is my colleague, and is actually who made the initial point of contact with your city, uh, is also a governmental lawyer, and that's all the details. Um, I have been working with the City of Milton since two thousand and seven. They are not unlike this jurisdiction, in that they were a young jurisdiction, of course, back then, and had a lot of challenges interacting with Fulton County, and interacting candidly with some of the municipalities around them. And, uh, I'd like to be able to bring that experience to bear, if in fact you need it. Uh, we have been dealing with various sorts of acquisition issues with respect to how, uh, some jurisdictions may expand for some time, and I am intimately familiar... to how, uh, some jurisdictions may expand for some time, and I am intimately familiar with those issues, having been on both sides, uh, of those issues. In fact, if you ever heard the saying, the best plaintiff's lawyer, the former defense lawyer, uh, than having to know how a county deals with the expansion of jurisdictions, I have a lot of experience with that. And that has made me keenly aware of what those sort of expansions look like, the pitfalls, what is in fact desirable, uh, to those entities that may in fact want to come under the umbrella of another jurisdiction. But, uh, having said that, I don't want to belabor or overextend, extend my welcome. I would like you to meet Mr. Strickland very quickly, if you could just come and say a word.
Hello, appreciate you having us here tonight. My name's Jeff Strickland, as Mr. Gerard said, I'm with, uh, Gerard and Davis. Uh, I too, uh, solely practice, uh, government law, being associated with Gerard and Davis. I've been practicing law for sixteen years and, and, uh, for the entire time, me and my law has been a component of my practice. And, uh, we're very pleased to be here today and meet you and to introduce ourselves, and certainly if you do have any general questions, I suppose, we'd have to entertain those.
Please, any questions?
If I may add, um, sir, please, uh, this would be just for the service of the F I B project. This is, um, staff is, is very busy, um, you can see how we are taking this project extremely serious. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we're working with a group who understands law, who understands the process and procedures of bringing things before you as it pertains particularly to the Fulton Industrial Project. So this is only and strictly for that project. Okay?
Uh, Ms. Williams, go ahead.
So, uh, yes, so have we budgeted for this process, I mean, for this project in the twenty-twenty budget through your...
It's currently in fiscal year nineteen for Fulton, fiscal year twenty as well.
Okay, so it's already in the, uh...
It's currently in current, but fiscal year now.
Thank you.
Great question. Here you go. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There was a last item.
I think it was, uh, Mr. Donald said he needed to have, uh, discussion, he forgot to discuss something with us, um, relative to real estate and litigation in the second session.
Mr. Donald, you said something you were...
Did you say you needed to discuss something relative to litigation and real estate in the second session, but we ran out of time? No.
Uh, why don't we take, uh, make a motion to take a break? I mean, I'm going to take a second.
Okay.
Okay. I make a motion that we adjourn to the seventh meeting.
Seven.
Your motion was to adjourn the work session.
Adjourn the work session.
To adjourn the work session.
Okay, thank you.
And, yeah, have a...
Just only a second.
Second.
All right, I'll remove the second in the discussion. Thing done, that's...
Adjourn.
Vote. That passes.
Just wanted to make sure.
You're right, we just adjourned.
Thank you, gentlemen.